Good afternoon. This is the April 18th meeting of the Palmer Planning Commission. It's six o'clock and we're going to begin our meeting. We'll start with a board member roll call.
John Massey.
Michelle Peckrow.
Jim Winchester.
Greg Miller.
And Roy Lauritsen.
Lauritsen?
Lauritsen, yes.
Welcome, Roy. So, the next agenda item is our approval of agenda.
A motion to approve the agenda.
And second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nobody on the screen, aye.
That's right.
You're good looking up there.
Few minutes.
I don't know if we have enough.
I don't know if we have the minutes. I don't have them.
I don't have minutes.
I did see them on there.
Oh, I didn't see them.
I don't think we had enough people.
I don't think we have enough.
We don't have enough here.
Four of us, yeah. As long as we were all there, anyway. I think we were all there. Yes, we were all there, I know. All of us were.
I was only.
The motion that we drew.
Yeah.
Motion.
Okay. A second?
We approve.
Aye.
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 You have to have an abstain.
Oh.
He's a member.
Oh, yeah. At the meeting, actually.
We're at the meeting, so you have to abstain.
Okay. Next time.
Next time.
I will, I will learn.
Getcha. We'll get it off right now.
So, our next agenda item is to meet and greet with Roy.
So, I'm Roy Lauritsen. I've been here about four years. I hope to be helpful. And I'm not afraid to work, so just sign me some people you wish to, and I'd be glad to dig in.
Good. Welcome.
Where were you before?
I was in Florida with my wife. My wife died in Florida.
Sorry.
And before that, I worked for Harvard University. I was a director of operations before that, a project manager. And so, when I came here, I also worked for Brock for a year as a homeless counselor, full-time. Otherwise, I've been working part-time citizen.
That must have been interesting.
I liked the work, but the difficulty was the databases. They had free databases, you have to keep up. And then people would call you up and say, "You know, we gotta do database corrections." And I'm saying, "Can't your computer program pick up the corrections?" These are things that they saw. But anyways, it was tedious. You have 40 case loads and you have people calling up for database corrections. It was a little insane. Eventually, I said, "Well, that's enough. Thank you."
Yeah. For about six months of my life, I managed the Bennington homeless coalition house.
Oh, yeah.
That convinced me to retire. And I did. I retired from that. So, it was, I think it was difficult work.
It's difficult work, and it's difficult to see people sometimes distressed that you really can't help.
Yeah.
It's the hardest part, I think.
Yeah. That's for sure. Well, welcome, Roy.
Thank you.
Glad to meet you. That brings us up to our review with the gentleman from BCRC.
Come over.
Let me slide to that side.
Take out my desk tray.
Would you like me to immediately start sharing the screen?
Oh, sure. No, I'm not. Why do you appear? Good evening, all.
Nice to meet you, Roy.
My name is Jonathan Cooper. Joined by Scott Grimline of BCRC. I laid out sort of where we were going last month, and so, back with some site information and economic development. So, we'll speak for about 10 minutes, and then what I'd love to do is distribute some documents that we have from our study exercise and just talk with you about the four scenarios, residential, mixed-use, commercial, and industrial, that this project, which is supported by a mutual planning grant from the state's agency of commerce and community development, has directed us to work towards. May I ask to advance our...
I will certainly try.
I may ask.
You're gonna ask?
Probably the down button, or...
Yeah, the down button, next to the one in the center.
Your right down there.
Perfect. So, a couple of items. Here's the scope of our discussion. So, we'll be talking about these potential lots for development, the current uses, adjacent uses, which informed, you know, sort of some of what had risen to the surface for us, and that selection criteria that will detail, so you have a sense of how we arrived at these conclusions and how it is to be able to feel about them when we get to that spot. We'll be talking about who owns what. We didn't really get into that portion of it. Wanted to save that for later, as you might recall. We'll get at this at our final slide after we actually talk of the sites. Conversations with property owners, et cetera, is something that's identified as a task for later on in this project. Normally, we'd be sort of speculating about what could work here, what's perfect, what's best, because we're just not there yet. So, our next slide is an overview of what we view as what we see as the goals for tonight's So, an overview of some regional data that will inform perhaps not the discussion tonight, but subsequent discussions when we meet again, an understanding of our criteria for selection process, an overview of the 48 lots and sites identified to date, just as a very first pass, and then to the course of our conversation with you all, hopefully lead with 20 key sites, five in each of those four categories, that we'll explore for further review and bring in actual detail and any additional direction you'd like to give us at this time. We're more than open to that. If there's things you'd like to see for us to have that site, that 20 key sites, B22, et cetera, that is absolutely what we should be working towards, if that is the will of the commission. There's one more slide about the scope of discussion, and that's not about the elephant in the room, it's about the elephants outside the room for tonight's conversation. If you had to come up with a list of what are the toughest things to get off the ground in Benton County, this would, if it's not top five, it's top two. And, you know, this is a real challenge. And the thought is, in the spirit of incremental development, where we'll sort of, building small is not thinking small. It's building trust, it's building momentum, and there's every chance that, whatever the answer to this question is, it might be an answer that someone who's never even been to Palmer yet may have. And if what we can focus on is the momentum at a scale that's community scale, that gives us a lot of valuable things to demonstrate and show to anyone who has an interest in this town who has not yet discovered it. So, we do have this in our list of 48, but we probably won't be dwelling on it too much tonight. May I advance to the next one? Okay. So, two slides here about some local and regional context, just to inform us, and then we'll get into the criteria, and then we'll hear from you and we'll learn from all that you know about this town that you have volunteered your time to for so long. For a small rural town, it's a bit of an asset to have an international airport within an hour and to have an interstate within 45 minutes, and to have a full hospital within 10 minutes, to have a campus satellite of that hospital here in town. That's a lot for a town of Palmer's size and locations. That's an exciting thing, wanted to talk about that at first. About 175 jobs in Palmer, based on the data, but about 1,500 people who live here are employed, and 140 or so are working from home, which is a relatively high percentage. And that's something that's, working from home is a little bit of a slippery data point. It might mean a sole proprietor who, you know, has a metal shop or an engine repair shop, you know, in the garage.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How do you, how did you determine those numbers, those jobs in Palmer and workers? How do you get those numbers?
For the jobs in Palmer, we use the Vermont labor market information from the Department of Labor, in which they add down to municipality scale. For that second component of who lives in Palmer who is employed, that's from the American Community Survey, from the, which is run by the Census Bureau, the federal Census Bureau. Then that also includes the average commute time data point of 23 minutes. That's one of their journey to work elements that they keep close track of. And the net employment outflow comes from a third-party database that we utilize called Lightcast. That's something that pays a lot of attention to workplace dynamics and movement, et cetera. So, a little bit of a blend of state, federal, and third-party.
Okay.
So, 75% of the residents of Palmer, according to the data, are people who live in Palmer with employment, work in the county. A really small number of people work in a different county in Vermont, a very small number. Most everyone else works outside the county, because as you can see, there's a lawful lot of jobs. And there's just a couple of towns, but 10 minutes, there's over 12,000 jobs in Bennington, Williamstown, another 5,300 in North Adams, you go up half an hour, there are 1,000 in Arlington, et cetera. And then, once you get to Pittsville and Troy, you're looking at a substantial number of employment opportunities. And the next slide sort of discusses those industries that the residents of Palmer are working in. Top-heavy, I guess you could say, in that more than a quarter are in, but what's one of the largest sectors of our economy, meds and heads, healthcare, educational services, and social assistance. So, over a quarter of the jobs. Well above state and national averages is the participation in construction, manufacturing, which I think probably rings true with your knowledge of the town. 14% construction, over 30% manufacturing. What's really interesting is that there's as many people working in agriculture and forestry and mining as there are working in banks and finance, insurance, and real estate. So, the big take home from this slide is that there's a wide variety of industries that Palmer residents are employed in. And down the line, we may be thinking more about, well, how do we tailor sort of what our site criteria are showing us for sites? Where might we want to think about those ultimately having disposition, or what might be the best audiences for what the town has to offer? But for now, we'll next jump to the criteria that we had come up with in the following slide. So, this is, so here with nine criteria, the first five are about the site itself, from acreage to slope, wetlands, floodplain, and the presence of rare species. The final four are about its context, whether it's in a designated village center, the infrastructure available to the site, the adjacent uses and site access. As you can imagine, the four uses we described, residential, commercial, mixed-use, and industrial, have different profiles. We'll need at least 10 acres to really have a fruitful conversation about industrial siting. You know, we need access points for trucks, in-and-out parking for employees, et cetera. Residential, we wanted to kind of scale it down. Let's not worry about the minimum lot size. Let's just take a look at what shivers out. With commercial, thinking about the Dollar General is a good example. That's 1.15 acres, and as you look at it, the footprint of the parking lot is about the footprint of the building. So, unless there's ample street parking or something, we'd probably need about a 1-acre minimum for that. We wanted to hold off, similarly to residential, on a minimum size for mixed-use, but with street parking in the middle. And a great example of what we sort of have in mind would be the parking, the space for parking that's by the cemetery, just up the road here a little bit, like that is sort of available to some of the parcels in the area. Slope was one of those criteria that eliminates a whole lot of a town that's actively in a dialogue between the Teconics and the Green Mountains. There's a lot of slope to be dealt with. Industrial siting is the most sensitive there. 5% is even a little sloopy for industrial. Really don't want to get much more than 3%. But residential has the most tolerance there. So, we have a 15% max for residential, 10% for the other two. Wetlands need to be minimal everywhere. It's an engineering issue. It can be worked around, but only to a certain extent. For the floodplain, however, we need to sort of have that be absent from commercial, mixed-use, and residential. There's some updated FEMA activity that is kind of creative around where residential siting can take place with the floodplain, but didn't want to extend that to other insurable assets that you see in industrial sector, et cetera. Rare species, similarly, are fairly tolerable in residential development settings. That isn't necessarily a problem or a consideration that can be ingrained in a site program. It needs to be absent from commercial and industrial, but some space for it in mixed-use. The village center designations, which Palmer has three, provide a number of tax credit incentives for working towards code improvements, plumbing, you know, fire sprinklering activities, et cetera. But if you could hop back one slide, it's best for residential development. It's best for mixed-use development. It's not really the right place for industrial developments. I think most of us would just sort of agree that that's not what we have in mind with village center designations. And the incentives that the state provides for infill in those village centers is really geared towards residential mixed-use. And again, infrastructure of the town sewer system, we're looking at where those sewer lines went, knowing that it'd be a requirement for industrial, and it's very helpful for the other three scenarios, particularly where we're trying to work towards density. And the adjacent uses and site access are kind of what you would expect them to be, that we don't really want to have industrial side of a residential, vice versa. We don't want to have residential access right off of the busiest parts of Route 7. We don't want to have industrial access, something that you have to go over across a bridge and take a hard right turn, et cetera, getting up to North Morris Hill Road. So, with all that in mind, we sort of wanted to just give a little exposure to, those are the nine criteria we came up with. We utilized a lot of GIS database activity to sort of cookie cutter, like the cookie dough, like, okay, take these out, take these out, take these out. And what we were left with, we found about 48 sites. And with you here in front of you in these packets are four maps that identify the sort of locations for residential siting potential, for the potential for each of the four scenarios. And as you take a look at it, you'll see that it isn't just eight separate sites. In some instances, we're sort of marking out, like in Palmer Center, there's 11 lots that sort of sprung up as having residential siting potential. We weren't limiting ourselves to vacant lots or undeveloped land. We were also bearing in mind that there may be additional accessory dwelling units, additional opportunities for siting. We're gonna kind of slow down at this point, unless there's any questions about the criteria. Love to just consider each one of these four scenarios, kind of go through them one at a time. You can, as many of you maybe, as I'm sure you know, like, number three, Horseshoe Lane, that 30-acre parcel, sort of undeveloped land, it's sort of in a mode sort of state. That's a very different kind of location than what you might see in Palmer Center. So, we were, you know, our considerations were sort of like, okay, the criteria brought this forward, so there may be different types of residential activities in those different areas. But Scott, was there anything that I had sort of left out from the view prior to jumping in?
No.
All right. So, truly, we wanted to sort of reserve the balance of our time, just to having a chance to talk through with you. Any questions you have about some of the sites? We'll start with the residential siting. Just like, can you tell me more about this? Why is this here? I thought maybe we'd see X, Y, or Z. That provides a sort of grouping of those sites that had emerged as relevant to residential siting, and a couple of notes that may help provide a little bit of clarity on where we were thinking and why.
Yeah, so just, you'll see that, you know, the number of lots, the number of dots don't match the number of lots, which is because a number of them are clustered together and specifically in the village areas and whatnot. So, yeah, just a general idea of sort of the spread of where these things are, without it being a hyper-detailed map, which will be later on in the process when we explore these properties, much more in depth after we sort of narrowed down the scope of work a little bit tonight.
Imagine that with Palmer Center, we saw a lot of opportunity for proximity to the town offices, to a very walkable section of town, the rec parks, gate park for...
Who's the next?
Rec, oh, yeah. If you go to the next slide, that gets similar to my perception here. So, we saw clusters around North Palmer, Palmer Center, and some other standalone South Stream Corridor, those final three were really outside of where we might have wastewater infrastructure, but we had sort of had in mind there something similar to the development along Streamway, that we'd seen similar within the town, some residential development patterns that may be relevant here.
So, these are basically areas that you think would be good for residential development?
So, yes, we applied our criteria, like, okay, we found acceptable slopes, we saw, you know, appropriate adjacent uses, and so, these are spots that make sense for us.
Pretty common residential development, like homes or apartment complexes? Both?
So, I think, in some instances, we might not imagine apartments along South Stream Corridor, for example.
Right.
But complexes is a little bit of a tricky sort of image, but the thought is that we could be increasing housing density. We hadn't really thought about the design of it, but rather knowing that some of these parcels have one house on them, and perhaps they could have two, just anything, so really starting very small.
A number of those with a lot size is particularly large, and there also is the ability to add another, you know, street-facing, you know, address at those points. Again, subdivision is its own thing that the individual property owner would have to, you know, go through a process to do, but, you know, if there's ways to incentivize that, whether that's through allowing there to be apartment development, or by working with some kind of a developer who, there's a model of development that's a sort of multiple sites in close proximity to each other. You know, that might work particularly well on a place, you know, like on this map, we identified 11 lots just in Palmer Center. You should also note that these lots will be repeated, you know, across different categories. So, particularly sites that are good for residential, and the sites that are in the village centers are also very good for mixed-use.
I think a couple of us around the DRB, we sounded, see a little action with some mods coming.
With what?
Some permits coming in. Some permits being developed on developed land. So, the questions are, you know, septic and water, how in a certain part of the area have town water and sewer.
Well, you guys have a fairly large sewer system, considering the, you know, some of the neighbors, like, you know, I know that Dorset is going through some difficult trouble right now with their sewer system. You know, and the cost of expansion is there. So, it is an asset that you guys have that that's actually really valuable, that, you know, you've invested in already, and, you know, hopefully, we can find the best ways to make that pay some dividends.
So, our North Palmer infill, Palmer Century infill, and Palmer infill, which are the bulk of the residential siting lots, are within those three AC/AB, or right next to those AC/AB boundaries for the village centers. And something that was sort of, as we looked at the Palmer infill, Main Street, Church Street, we're right next to the library. You know, there's some, you know, the attempts, I think there had been a small cafe at the church, you know, that there are some community energy, you know, sort of activities ongoing. So, we, similar to Jim, as you mentioned, there's some permitting activities sort of in the pipeline. We're also sort of looking at what's here now, and based on what's here now, where might some of the lowest barriers be to sort of bringing about a, on the one hand, there's a municipality that has 1,500 people who are working and 175 jobs, may wish to grow its job base, which is the sort of inverse of in Arlington, where there's 1,000 jobs. And 20 years ago, those people lived in Arlington who worked there, and now it's like, hey, how do we get more of those people to live here? So, but we were thinking that with, given some of the assets that we sort of had described at the outset of the town's location and proximity to some of the, some external infrastructure, that perhaps this is a useful, these are useful areas to be thinking about. If we're gonna talk about residential development, they seem to be sensible places to sort of begin that conversation.
We've also identified for residential development here, a number of sites that would be suitable for, you know, multi-unit development on fairly large lots that could then be subdivided. So, those are areas that are, you know, in the, most of our, you know, most of what we've identified is along, you know, the major, you know, 346 and 7 corridors, but, you know, these are, these are up a lot more in the sort of eastern side of the town. And there are some large areas there that, you know, do not necessarily require sewer to build, or to attract, you know, the Palmer to those areas. So, there are a few sites that we thought would be particularly good, and a couple that we thought would be nice to improve a little bit. There's some existing stuff, specifically, you know, along Lake Potter there, that we feel could be a much higher value development than currently exists in that area.
Is there somewhere where it tells us, like, which of these are on with town water and sewer?
Pretty much, we pretty much know where it's at.
I mean, are we...
I didn't print that column. We have that in our data source, but I didn't include that in the spreadsheet.
Would we be looking to try to get, like, a small apartment complex developed here, do you think?
What I see in my videos, what they want to do is flow an area where already exists water and septic. Which I think Bobby Manchester or someplace like that, but Palmer's, hey, it's who, he owns the land, and we have some problems here that we're working on, that...
I mean, I know there's... I mean, I know there, I mean, there's housing shortages everywhere. It'd be nice if it had something like that, that could be developed, but...
No, we're trying to put water into one of the trailer parks. It's a big asset, and they've had the issues. There's a place across the street from me, I think we missed, right across from the trailer park, there's 10 acres there.
Yeah.
Debbie Nichols owns, and it's a nice lot, but, you know.
Right behind your store.
Yeah, right next to it.
You know where Palmer Pets is?
Yeah, yeah.
All right.
In between Palmer.
Right. Yeah, that's good.
It's a really nice lot. They found a lot of water on it, but she wanted a lot of money for it, so.
Is that all sloped or partially terraced?
Yeah, it's got an excess, it's fairly close. It's a nice lot. Anyway, that's, she'll do with what she wants.
When you say mixed-use, what are you talking about? Are we just talking about apartments and homes, or are we talking about small businesses? So, right now with residential, we're looking, we're thinking about effectively homes and apartments, like, the entire piece of property is only going to be used to house someone, and maybe something like accessory dwelling units or something else on the space, but typically, either apartments or housing. Now, that can support these other uses that we're talking about. So, if there was in, you know, across the street from the, adjacent to the post office, there's sort of a large field that's part of the lot that we've identified that's with, on the horse farm there. You know, if we had an apartment building there, it's much more likely that the pizza shop that was, you know, located in that location would have had a better opportunity to develop a customer base. You know, so they're not necessarily exclusive of each other when it comes to overall development, but, yeah, so effectively, what we'll be going through here is this, which is a residential, you know, uses solely for this specific lot, and then we're gonna have a list of commercial uses solely for that specific lot, and then we'll have a series, a conversation sort of about mixed-use, which is typically gonna be commercial on the ground floor, residential on the second floor, on the floors above.
Yeah, they're doing that in, because they still live in Austin, the entire town is becoming commercial-first where, and residential is, like, destroying the town, honestly.
That's what we do best.
God, it's...
Where's that?
In Austin.
I speak to Saratoga, too, with it.
Yeah, it was awful. Like, everything that made Austin what it was, music capital, they're like, "Yeah, the music's too loud." And you just moved onto Sixth Street, of course, it's too loud.
I remember seeing that scenario in our town plan, though.
Yeah, but as I was, but as I was driving around town, there, two weeks ago, just all the construction that's going on, and it's all, yes, first level is a commercial, and then straight up.
Well, Williams down Spring Street is like that. You have condos above the residence, throughout the entire street. I wonder if Section 8 would be included in your mixed-use. Affordability is perhaps one of the things that Palmer has to offer, vis-à-vis other... Affordability is perhaps one of the things that Pownell has to offer vis a vis the other towns here. Williams Town did a project on coal where they, they did that mixed use with Collection 8s.
Phototech.
I wonder that's.
330 photo on Coal Avenue.
Yeah.
They took a place of us a long time and they're really, really, and I'm amazed it's next to the river.
Yes, right by the river.
You know, we're talking about floodplain, so we stopped a lot here at Pownell because of the floodplain.
Yeah.
But a couple of things have happened nicely for us. They, the trailer park, if they close up, the river will go in there instead of in Pownell and so a little bit of a help.
Yep.
Yeah, I know the Coal Avenue development you referred to.
Yeah, it's a go in the back road.
Yeah.
So kind of what we're looking for right now is, is, you know, guidance on what our next step should be. So for example, he just mentioned looking for, for homes that would be, you know, focused on, on affordable housing. So that, that's a different kind of like lot size if we're thinking about apartments, if we're thinking about, you know, right now the town code only allows there to be eight units, you know, on a lot. So, so that, that's also one of the things we would potentially want to address, like when it comes to the part where we're saying, what types of recommendations does this committee eventually want to bring to the select board in order to make development happen? The, you know, so, so, you know, we want to say, if you're saying, if you guys are saying it would be really interesting if you looked for sites that might be accommodating to senior housing, if you're interested in doing something like an Equinox type of development happen in Manchester, or again, like apartment, or you're more interested in saying, I think what we really need to do is, is focus on keeping, you know, our single family, you know, homeownership, you know, model that, you know, that's predominant throughout the town and, and finding ways to, you know, make that work within, within our sewage systems and doing this sort of infill type of work.
As far as senior, senior housing, it seems to me there would need to be more infrastructure planning to support that type, that type of the thing, you know. You know, right now Bennington, the only access, I mean, Pownell, the only access we have to public transportation is Route 7. Straight line from Bennington down Route 7 and back with a few stops. Seniors living off in Route 7, in a complex or individually will be challenged as far as transportation to get, to get out for goods, for shopping, for entertainment and whatever.
You know, I keep looking at those two lots to extract this side of the railroad tracks is a huge lot, but we decide and it's the water could be there and sewer could be there. And.
We're talking?
Okay, we're talking the racetrack and on the, on this side of the railroad tracks.
Yep.
You don't go across the railroad track.
Yeah.
There's two big lots there. One's the ball field, we call it.
Oh, they say they have the ball field there.
And the other one is a huge one.
Yeah.
It's definitely, that's, that's an important place because.
Who owns that?
The racetrack owner.
Of course they do.
I know, but that, maybe, you know, we'll, we'll see what the state is doing anyway. But that has, could have water and septic. It was, yeah. And, and it doesn't deal with the railroad and it doesn't deal with the floodplain.
Right.
You know, and there's.
He was smart, he would develop that.
Well, he's, he's smart, but he's got the.
There's a new owner for the railroad now.
Yes, it is. Yeah, really good.
Or an animal to, to, same.
Well, no, they're good people. I talked to a couple of them, but anyway, the thing about is Pownell, our number one thing is the post office. The post office in Williams Town is on Spring Street. You ever tried to go down Spring Street and go to the post office?
Yeah.
So on the post office is the place, most people from Williams Town go to the Pownell post office. So that's what creates Stewart's business, the liquor store's business and the car dealer's business. I went to the post office and I see a lot of people when I go to the post office. I don't know.
Yeah.
And I've been here for 60 years. It's, it's a good, it's a good run. It's a very good, and by the way, the post office is owned by the fire department. They own that, that piece of property you're talking about, the bag?
Yeah.
They own their home business and they own the fire, the post office.
That is a lot that's identified.
Yeah. We have that one, so that would be a nice lot too. There's a certain part of Pownell that just attracts Williams Town.
Yeah, I go on a spring street, I can't park.
No, they never park down there.
I think looking into both aspects of housing, so multi-use and single family still because you're going to have a lot of people just, they don't, they're not going to get along with neighbors, they don't want to live in those kinds of places, they want a single home and other ones are, you know, you'll have investors and stuff that will do multi-family houses, you know, and that'll save space too by generating those, if, again, sewer or water is accessible where it's, you know, able to have multi-units in it. That's, that's our other key, key to that. You can't just stick them in anywhere without a good septic system and that kind of stuff.
South Stream Road is a beautiful road as far as I'm concerned. That's.
I enjoy it.
True point, but I mean, in this land out there and there's a lot of land out there. I guess nobody's ready.
I'm going to buy up everybody around me so I can keep everybody away.
Now that is, that's a number one problem. That's a problem. Pownell was, you know.
I got all, I got a bunch of perfect neighbors.
I do too, I'm glad.
Yeah, love my neighbors.
The deer.
Bell across the stream, I bring them cake.
And I just sold some nice land to some Williams Town people, so they're coming in down to Scott Road.
As a kid, it was trains that woke me up at night and now if I live here, it's owls. It's going to take a little hitting used to. So the one, so, but the point that Jim, I think is, it would be helpful is, is the thought of, is the commission prefer not to explore opportunities for, on South Street Corbin Lake Road, it's just like, hey, that's, that's the way it ought to be, how it is is the way it ought to be because we don't, that would help us just pare away some from this, we have an extensive list here, if those, if you'd rather have us focus on some of the more subtle areas, although I know that you'd mentioned a little bit of maybe, we try to finesse a little bit of both, but if, if it was a little different, going to South Stream Road was a different kind of animal than the other elements on this list. So if it feels like pursuing that's not the best use of our time, we're happy to sort of remove that because that's, that's good information for us.
And there are a couple of other locations that are similar out here as well. Like I said, there's the Lake Potter, you know, area here, but then there's also a, a large farm field that's identified on Horseshoe Lane and that, that's an area that, that could become, it feels like it's very primed to have an suburban development in that space because there just is a lot of similar housing in that area itself already. And so it seems like that's sort of the natural growth pattern for that area there. However, again, if that's, if the commission is very specifically interested in, you know, in, in, in more of a focus on the sewage areas and really maximizing, you know, the town's investment and ability to, you know, to, to use that asset to its fullest, to that's, then that's the kind of thing that we would really want to get a sense of right now.
Yeah, I think, I think looking into that, I don't know what the usage amount is. I mean, how, how much can our system take and how many more places can we add to that? That's.
Horseshoe Lane, that's by, that's by Puttingstone Road.
Puttingstone, what's it, something?
Second stone.
Puttingstone was laid out real, the first real development laid out perfectly and the other places across the river.
And how are they with their septic systems?
I heard, I've not heard any of that problem.
Yeah, they're, they're, you know, cesspool I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Selling and having seals.
Oh, didn't go up there.
Yeah.
But that, and where you live was designed well.
Swallow Hill.
Swallow Hill, Swallow Hill across the river. That was built well.
So I think that's, it's one thing that would be helpful for us if we can get a sense, maybe move some folks around town for, for where the wastewater capacity is at this time and that may help inform some of our, our subsequent, you know, activities. But we could certainly give some thoughts to Horseshoe Lane as a, I think Scott, as you said, sort of the character is established by what's, what's adjacent and that that's something that gave, there's a single family development sort of.
Like what I was saying, though, your neighbor likes to bring in somebody like next to me, I sold some land to somebody I like rather than somebody I didn't care for. But I think in some, like Horseshoe to Dine or your development or Barbara's Pond or, you know, there's an area by Barbara's Pond, you know, the person bought that and that's.
Because I was, what you referred to was Lake Potter.
Yeah, so.
It's Barbara's Pond.
Okay, and we were kind of in some of the maps, say Lake Potter's, I put Barbara Pond Road, I have this little, Barbara Mont is the town called Pond.
Yeah.
All right, maybe we'll address that. Great, that's good to know. I'm not that, I'm blocking any of that. So, all right. Scott, I was curious about the portion of the heart gravel bank I thought might be of interest, of interest to sort of discuss. It jumped out at you, I thought that made some sense, but because we have the both the Brookman components to it, so that's, is that now all like under rethinking of, does that Brookman site go all the way down the hill? Is, is that sort of how that, that parcel's laid out?
It's the two adjacent parcels next to the Brookman site, as if, if there was a need to do, you know, the type of development that didn't have a dead end obviously in that area, you know, and then, you know, it is still a hill and would require a switchback and whatnot in order for, for there to be any kind of level of development in that space. But it is also a formerly industrial site, so, so I mean, you know, it has potential for, for a number of, a number of uses as a sort of gray field that's, you know, not going to be growing back, not going to be rejoining the wilderness anytime soon.
Mrs. Lash bought it to shut it down. She doesn't like the noise and she doesn't like the dust and it sat there for a while and she just bought it and she wants to look at it for now. V O S S, she's.
Yeah, I noticed that a lot of these sites are along the river, which also probably means are near the railroad tracks. Is that true?
No.
I'm just guessing, okay.
The railroad tracks follow each other for six and a half miles.
Yeah, right.
The North Pownell infill for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have, we have looked at floodplain maps as far as this process as well. You know, I think that the river's.
You know.
Once in a while, but not as, not as severe as.
No, sixty, sixty years along by, by Creusick River, I've seen that come up above the road once in sixty years and that was high rain.
You don't have the same problem as Wilmington, I know.
Absolutely, yeah. So when it comes up, it comes, yeah, it's part of your thought around sound or vibration or?
Yeah, certainly, people might not want to live near the railroad tracks, that's a possibility, but it's a great asset if you're trying to get goods in and you've got a commercial business. Just, just considering. I'm the new guy here, I'm trying to.
You said four years. Yeah, more time on the.
But I've been hiding my time away, so.
So we were kind of curious if, about that Dean Road, the former general store, that, that one has sort of caught our eyes for a little bit and we were just wondering if, if, if that seems like a, an area, that sort of North Pownell infill, that's sort of a bigger, going from Tubbs Road down to Dean Road, that's a sort of a flatter geographic stretch, but have, do you happen to, have there been?
I've talked to Debbie Devon-Waltz owns it and I encourage her to deal with somebody in the state, it's, it's an old building that's, that could get money to be fixed up for a general store. It's quite a, quite a history and I ran the store next to the Tammy for years and they cashed their checks and it's just their company store.
Yeah.
While Tammy was in existence and she bought it and I thought maybe, you know, she's got a little trust, she makes sewing and stuff like that, but she isn't really interested in going out for some state money. There was a couple of people around, came to the meetings and showed you how to get grants to be, old buildings like that, so apparently she's not interested, but you never know.
Never know, yeah. All right, Scott, should we think about our?
Go on to the next.
Sure, yeah. So maybe we'll circle back if we have, there's one question, we have a couple of good points to go off of and I think maybe that the ball field component you mentioned as well, we can, and then up around the, between Pownell Pets and Winchester's, that is another one that we'll take a, take a look.
Yeah.
So our next element, some of the same, you know, usual suspects, the same cast of characters for commercial siding and a few distinctions, I think, so we're sort of removing some of the ones we saw for our residential, but sort of adding in, so no longer are we around Barbara Pond, as you might expect, but some interesting stuff around Pettit Drive particularly, that I think is just, yeah, would be good to sort of hear your thoughts on, as it's an interesting lot that sort of surrounds the Dollar General and extends back quite a ways, I think with the, it appears, I think a gravel operation that may be no longer operational or maybe it still is.
No.
He didn't, he just used it for most of his use.
Yeah.
Was in there.
So that one was, you know, so you see some of the elements for that, that Pownell Century infill, North Pownell, et cetera, but that was one that we had sort of thought might be worth.
And then also included in that is, are the number of lots, you know, up to Deon effectively that are, that are between the Dollar General and actually that same lot that has the gravel pit has some frontage on seven. So, you know, the, the idea is that, you know, we have sort of a template there already with, with a sort of parking lot, you know, focused, you know, store and, and those are fields that, you know, are, are, are underutilized to some degree when it comes to agriculture and things like that right now. So it seems like a natural, again, another place to naturally expand some, some commercial development and see if there might be some incentives to have some additional stores there on Route 7 that are a little more auto-centric than the ones that we'll be talking about, you know, in other parts of the sort of infill spaces of this area.
The part of Route 7, we're Dollar Generalist, we have sewer and water that's.
Yes, the sewer goes.
Goes up there, which is going to, actually was going to the old trailer park.
Yeah, it goes up to the trailer.
So that was going to be a place if something happened around one trailer park, open up there. But what Pownell really needs desperately is diesel and I'm thinking that lot of the various track and even now the gravel bed. We need, we need a gas station for trucks with diesel. It's, there's many trucks in Pownell. I mean, we have a lot of truck traffic and there's no diesel in town. So that's, that's an area that I think that somebody could pursue with a major oil company, the gravel bed or the, you know, it wouldn't bother her at all. I'm just thinking that's one knee we really need.
Yeah, you just have to go to James Town to get my diesel.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's, we have 346, a ton of traffic. I mean, I've been there forty something years and it's the airport, the port, Harling Gaste, North Adams, Pittsfield, you don't want to go over Route 2. It's 346, it's, it's a truck and diesel fuel is much needed. Little things, that drives me crazy that, you know, things like that we need and then attracts everybody if they start coming around. Eventually, you just said, when we started out, where you can go from Pownell, this is a great place to go anywhere, three hours you can go and we saw it with the racetrack. I mean, they came from New York, they came from Connecticut, they came, you know, and we were a destination place for a long time. And now we took a period where we're not a destination place, we're trying to find our way and it looks like it's a better community, but we used to have people come and we had restaurants, we had a lot of them, everything. And it all went away and so we're, we're, we're trying to find ourselves and they give a helping us to think of some things that we, you know, if we're looking at, we're getting our eyes.
And so one of the things about, on that, on the topic of thinking about, okay, what, what attracts, what grows, okay, one of the, if you're thinking as an example, up towards the hospital, as you head down Main Street, oh, there's a podiatrist, there's an eye doctor, et cetera. And I was thinking.
Yes.
And that commercials on Cash Place, you know, sort of part of addition to the S V M C parcel, is there an interest in the commission thinking about? Is there an interest in the commission thinking about, okay, that seems like an appropriate place for additional commercial development, you know, is that something that we can be focused on as sort of thinking about?
No, and, and, you know, all the existing commercial on that space has direct access to seven. But part of the reason why I said cash place on this specifically is because there was a sense that if that road was paved, it might be a nice way to, you know, take some of the. Some of the traffic, you know, inflow, crossing traffic back and forth to a specific intersection and have all the, all the traffic move through one corner there. Obviously you'll get rid of the existing, you know, curb cuts for S V M C or for the car dealership there. But if there was any additional development there, it might be worthwhile to have their, you know, driveways be on, on a side road in order to, you know, maintain a little bit more reasonable semblance of traffic without having to expand the width of the road.
We'll buy enough all the houses along by the hospital, United Council. Come on, so you, you, you get a hit. So if you fly over the hospital and see the parking space. I mean, my daughter's a nurse, we haven't done one for years, but I'm seeing the growth of the parking lot and it's a monster. I mean, it's. And in the morning, that's where they're going. Either got an appointment there or they work there and that's the traffic. And hey, that's what we need, something, we got a hospital here, but it doesn't, it doesn't take patients, so if you cut your hand, you don't go there.
Yeah.
When you do sell in all the land, Austin's the guy in North Attlet. I got a couple of girls that work there, I swear you're working at Austin.
So one of the, thinking about some of, again, we'll shift to three forty-six, sort of that north panel area. Commercial signing potential, we've sort of seen a lot, as you might expect, along North Panel meets three forty-six. But it's also where we have the, the baseball diamonds, right, and so there's. Some, is there any access that you know of to that nature conservancy quarry hill from that section? Or is it really just from?
It's all cliff.
Or is it, yeah, there's not like a?
No, no, I think the real estate people in Bennington bought the one place that they bought all the land, but it's not good land and they built two houses going up to Dockwood's Road.
Okay, okay.
Okay, and I can't think of the name of them.
The churches farm is like.
The best piece of land down here is, is the tree farm.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, I go all that all the time.
The tree farmers is identified as, and at least, at least a front acreage on that.
Yeah, it's there, the front place, but who's the real estate people that do it, god damn it, they, yeah, I'll think of it.
Yeah, and the question is, is it something where you, you'd think that maybe it would be something that we'd be interested in sort of, you know, thinking about that as a more of a commercial site than a sort of commercial or residential site. You know, if, if, if it's a tree farm, but also like an agway or something like that, you know, you know, for the, for other parts of the year, is that, you know, is. Is that the kind of use that, that we should sort of think about or, or again, is it, is that because it's already surrounded by housing, is that the kind of. Kind of situation where, where we want to maybe identify that more in our housing column than in our commercial development column?
There's a second thing we missed, true value. Mostly we almost true value. That was the liquor store. Dwyer's? Yeah, the way they do with the bottles, that was a true value. Joe was going to make a deal a little bit and went down the tubes, but we missed that badly. So, so anybody in town that would put up, you know, and I see a perfect place toward North panel at the old store.
And they did a little bit was that the North panel store.
Yeah.
They did a little bit there before they.
They tried. So, you know, there's places where I think, I, I think it's just a matter of Williams Town being, getting too filled up and too expensive, they're going to come this way.
Thing on your map, you have on Cedar Hill. Forty-six, specifically where on?
So on the, I guess, the, I guess, we'll say south side of three forty-six. Just a little bit, a little bit to the east of where Cedar Hill meets three forty-six. There's about a fifteen acre segment there that's out of the floodplain. And it's, so it's like north of Macmolding, it's, it's a little south of three forty-six and.
Is it across from Rebecca's house?
I think it's nearby a house there with a large tree.
Fourteen acres there. No septic or commercial.
Okay, so, so where, oh, that's, that's not, that's not sewed on the sewer line?
It is the houses, but not the property, can't be, can't be developed.
It can't be, okay.
They, they shot that through, they, they avoided a place where it could be developed with a sewer.
Oh.
And that's one, because the guy complained, they shot right by it. The racetrack has capacity for the race.
But that could be added to the sewer though, right?
Yeah, I don't know. To be honest with you, I know.
Well, yeah, that was what I was talking about earlier. I don't know what our capacity is. I don't know if we can add more things or not. That's the hard part of that part.
I've talked to him a little bit about the legion. It's pretty much the state set up this whole thing, who could have and who couldn't. So sometime you might want to visit Darcy down at the sewer plant and she'll give you the information that you might need.
Great.
Very important that she is regulated by the state.
Okay, so that was, and that's, this is a great point, just we had sort of looking at where the map, where the lines had run, sort of thought, okay, if it's. Adjacent to it across the street, there might be a way forward, but it may be that as we have this conversation, we'll find that some stuff is far less feasible than. Not all connections are built equal or something like that. Okay, so we will check in with Darcy.
Darcy.
Okay, got it. That's valuable to me.
Yeah, she could add a lot to you, because I know some people try to hook up, that weren't hooked up and it's quite expensive.
Okay, yeah, and it, it does seem like, I can't imagine it being, you know, less than a hundred and fifty bucks per foot, you know. And it's, I mean, as soon as you get outside of like twenty feet or fifty feet, you're looking at tens of thousands of dollars, so it, but that is a, so we will definitely start that.
I mean, it's, it's, it's something that can be done, it's just a matter of, is the system able to take more, how many more can we put on it that they can process?
You guys could probably do more than.
So we will be sure to jump in on that and getting a feel for where their capacity is and.
That land in a floodplain?
That, the section of it that we sort of found, oh, there's a portion of that is not, and that was, we were looking at where the floodplain ends, where the wetlands are and where they are not and. Found a fifteen acre portion that was pretty flat, zero to five percent. We thought, okay, this might be a useful way for us to talk about, some industry to talk about.
A lot of the parcels are a lot. Areas.
About fifteen acres.
And also a lot of parcels are kind of, I don't know, they look like a gerrymandered, you know, congressional district or something. They're not always, you know, very rectangular, yeah.
Alright, so that gives us a little bit of, so we can, we can work on it and get, that'll be really helpful for us, I think, for both commercial and industrial sighting as we get a feel for the capacity.
I think that'll go for both sections.
Okay, so the, the mixed use sighting, as if we jump to the next ones, you might imagine, takes us back principally to the village centers. You know, we have a lot of lots there, but sort of just five clusters of them, you see North Panel, Panel Center, and then sort of the, the village of number five. And a couple of, a couple of spots that we thought, one at, again, Cedar and three forty-six, there's a lot of space there. And also back to the, the gravel bank, which had sort of caught our attention because of the, the flexibility that it had. Not having sort of jumped in on the, the background, which is sort of the next step for us. So I think as you sort of.
Oh, it's Roy.
Roy, okay. We're trying to get a feel for what we have in mind when we say mixed use, knowing that sometimes it can make a place look like a. Urbanism nightmare and other times it can make a place feel like it felt back in the day. And, and that's a worthwhile thing. It helps, you know, remain, let places stay busy throughout the day, let places quiet down at night because people are sitting down for dinner. So one of the questions that we sort of have is more, I guess, a little more abstract is. Is there that sense, you know, we can look at a, at a town plan and see what goals are, we want places to have vitality, want them to feel like. They're relevant to today's economy and they're relevant to the characteristics of the town that, that, that the notion of heritage is based on. Does it feel like bringing in some of that mixed use activity, which generally does mean more cars kind of coming and going. Is something that the commission feels is valuable within those already pretty thickly developed. Villages or is, have you gotten the feel, the sense that it's getting a little maxed out? It's cheap to jowl and we're not sure that there's much to be done. And that's, that's just an open ended question, just to sort of guide the conversation, because that, your thoughts there are really valuable to us.
I've driven a lot around panel. If you go up Barbara's Pond Road and you take off these side roads. You can go around and around, you see a lot of nice houses, you see a lot of people that have their neighborhoods. And I don't think they're going to give up much property. Panel's an interesting town to drive through.
They can make, make lot sizes smaller, but I don't think interested in just a little piece of land. You know, they have an acre or more, they don't want to bring it down at all, don't want to share that.
Makes a good point with the railroad too, you weave it down and having dinner and the railroad's going by, it takes, it takes a long time to get used to the railroad. But I live a long way from it and I can hear it at night just as loud as, you know, like it's next door.
The wind's right, I can hear it.
We can, but panel's definitely got a lot of places that. If you drive out off Barbara's Pond Road, there's three roads there that go all over and there's many houses out in there and. Like I say, Barbara's Pond Road is a beautiful road going, and there's going to be sections of Carverna Hill that are going to probably develop. That's somebody before the plane would now, and there's a lot of space out there, there's a lot of space out there.
Phil Lonsberry took me on a ride from my house, somewhere in town, like in town. But took all these back roads, I'm like, I've never seen these places. I'd never seen these places.
No, and there's some very, there's some very, very nice people living in this damn town. I mean, really good town to be in. And got a spot.
What do you, I'm, I'm getting a sense that you feel like the more natural space for that type of development. Yeah, is, is not necessarily, you know, going to be North Panel, but maybe Panel Center, or some around here where we're already building the park.
Right, I think it'd be more in village sections.
If you're going to turn an area to something that feels more like a village where people can go and walk to a nice shop or something.
We don't have any sidewalk.
Much more likely in this, in this area, okay.
So I mean, if you had a mixed use and I mean, I don't think anybody wants to see Bennington or Williamstown, they don't want to see it here. But if you had more businesses, regardless of if it's business and top rental, but if you had more of a line of business in those village areas. We could put a sidewalk in where people could park someplace and could walk through and have all these little shops or, or something, but.
Best place in town to walk is. Burlington's Road, I mean, that's beautiful.
Yes.
I mean, and it's too bad that Burlington's got all this land that, that could definitely be developed. I mean, Sunset Drive is gorgeous, the sunset there and the Burlington Road, that's the best walking place in town. No question about it. And the view is gorgeous and you're looking across at the big farms that's going to sell for a million.
House farms there.
Yeah, it, it's a beautiful section of town.
I mean, I think that would be, your mixed use, so is it going to go backwards? It's not going to be out there, it's gonna, it's gonna.
Neighbor's going to sell to somebody they know or get their kids a place of property. You got ten acres and you're going to subdivide it. And that's what the back roads.
Along the corridors or something like that, that's where you're going to get that mixed use. You could have that, a lot of that in there.
A very, very difficult town to move into. You just, people just don't, in a lot of ways, they're nippy. They like where they go, they, they got stop and chop, they got. You might have an uphill valley.
Yeah, especially after going back to Texas, coming back here, I was like.
But I think people are realizing that the land is valuable, yeah.
Yeah, and we, and we, it's part of, I think, what the exercise, for, as we sort of discussed, that sort of thing about, sorry, who's. A lot of people have sort of discovered this corner of, you know, the world, right? And, and when they bring with them their images of what it ought to look like, or here's what I'd like, oh, wouldn't it be nice if I could get a nice taco or something like that? But the, the idea is, where is the, the, any change, and the reason we talk about small increments development is even small development is development and development's change in that. We feel responsibilities to the towns that we live in, that we volunteer to, to help support. And we're sort of trying to get our heads around is like where, where does something, where does the scale feel right? Where does it seem like this, this shift is something that we welcome and, you know, the, having like this facility, you know, and, and all the work that went into. Moving from a spot where there wasn't really room for us to have this conversation if we were back in the old spot, to something that, that is light. That has a relationship with the outside and that, you know, that, that little temporary rink that was just right out here like a year or two ago and it was, you know, an opportunity to. Sort of for me to sort of see it, I keep my skates in the trunk in winter time and it was like, oh, I gotta, I gotta do that. But it was the, the thought here is sort of where, you know, do we envision that sort of like panel center? It can be a village center on a map in Mount Pili. Be what we sort of envision as a village center here, you know, as in, in the lived experience and that sort of, I think, in some ways, thinking through what, what it might be like to have, you know, there's the. Where that we have that sort of heritage of, oh, here's someone's engine repair shop or car repair shop and they live right next door and that's, that's the point, you know, and that. That keeps the connections happening, the conversations happening and.
The distant past, those things that did exist.
Right.
Than we do on the, on the street.
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it took me a long time to figure out panel, okay, and in the old days, back in the fifties, they had no school here, a schoolhouse, no high school. So the kids lived down here, went to Williamstown. Kids who lived in North Panel took the train to Husk Falls. And the other kids who lived up there went to Penn High and the Catholic school. So around these fire departments, fire department here, fire department in North Panel, fire department east, panel, panel. The social fabric, the person where they met, where they were Monday night, fire departments, their Christmas parties, their parties and weddings and whatever. Developed around the fire departments. When fire department had bingo, this was, this is a growing up of the communities. So move here, you found these little clicks in all around these fire departments, their social life and everything, and where they went to school. Now, since then, we've had our school here in panel, but we never had the school here. We never had any zoning until the seventies. So it was like the racetrack came in with more people than the town had. They did what they wanted, they bought land. They weren't going to stay here all year, they were going to Florida, but they're going somewhere else. They trashed the land. Put in fifty gallon drums for septic tanks because they're only using it in the summertime, most time they were down the track. So this all left and here we are, this place is pretty nasty. And some of the septic, you know, talking to my grandson about that, he's an engineer and he says, I've seen, I said, panel's had them. I bought a place with railroad ties for septic, you know, but we polluted, the river was polluted, okay? So that was gone because it came from Massachusetts and they cleaned it up, we had to clean it up and it's cleaned out. But the racetrack took water from the race, from the river, used it in the goons and shipped it back out, the class career of it. So we cleaned up a lot of things, but the racetrack kind of left us dead in a lot of ways. Left us at trailer parks, left us some things that, you know, so like I say, we're trying to come back to.
For a while, the racetrack brought an economy.
Oh, no question about it.
There was cash flow in this town, we're buying with, they didn't have to go advantage of the game. Didn't have to go to Williamstown anyway, you know, get it locally, the package stores were much. Get it locally, the package stores were much easier. There were more than one. They're all, everybody.
The second, the first and second package store, the second was Turner Meads in the whole state. And the first one was in second Bennington. So that brought the economy, you know? Right? I'm just trying to give you some history of Pownell.
On that, on that same side of the street is where the auto, Turner Meads Autobody, there's that like Vermont cheese, it's a white building.
Hillside House.
Hillside House. Can you, I hear a little bit about, has that?
And it was.
Doesn't the ballet own it or something?
No, well, the Russian ballet bought it. But I mean, Armstrong bought it. Well, yeah, for storage. Storage, okay. But I.
I don't think we got that one on our list and I was just wondering if, would it make sense to evaluate that parcel as, or is it best to just continue with what we got?
No septic.
Oh, okay.
There's one time at the Legion, no one bought it, okay? It was a lumberyard. When the racetrack was there, it was a lumberyard. It was a pretty good lumberyard business. And then the, the Legion bought it and had bingo there and they had to get out of there. And they made a lot of money there and they, and they bought the old, the restaurant that ran now. That was a restaurant. So this, bingo's been big in Pownell. Bingo's been, it bought the firehouse, it bought a lot of things, fire trucks and everything. They, they own their own property and.
What's the issue with septic there?
None.
They don't have, anybody that worked there, you just have to run across the stewards to go to the bathroom.
What happened is the guy next door moved in more people. They got a little place next door, so it's one of those things.
I see the trucks come in from the ballet and they, because it's a touring truck that I would normally use out with a band and I was like, oh, yeah, I see balls here. I was like dropping off.
Yeah, he's, he's got to get rid of that guy.
Yeah.
Now, now I'm the last person on septic.
Okay. And you, and you, it comes down?
No, no, it comes across the street on the other road.
Oh.
And septic and what?
Yeah.
I'm the last person then. So.
So I have a question. What, what services are we lacking in the town? I mean, I have to drive 12 miles to get food at a supermarket. Same with prescription, finding a prescription.
Yep.
I know it's unreasonable to expect something like that here, but general store would be?
We have, we have the Dollar General and I don't know if they're actually getting the business from Pownell that they.
There's a $2 million store. It's a very good store. Welcome to Pownell.
We're all, we're used to driving to get anything.
All our lives.
It's nice to have the Dollar Gen, I like having the Dollar General here in town.
I would, I would love to see a hardware store.
Having one that's hardware better.
I met a Mr. Williams at Calvin Shop.
Yeah, I mean, I, I do, I go mostly to Williamstown as opposed to Bennington. I mean, I know Bennington's now going to get a Starbucks and a Chipotle, so I'll be running up there all the time. But yeah, same, like you're saying, I go to, you know, my co-op, my prescriptions, my veterinarian, my warehouses are in North Adams.
Yeah.
You know, where I work.
I'm back in Williamstown. I go shop there and I.
Now that you mention it, apart from the use that Mac has for that facility, is there any warehousing and distribution activity in town?
No, there isn't.
It's an interesting thing that there's not.
I would kill.
That was going to be the racetrack.
I always thought that would be a distribution hub.
Oh, yeah.
Entry to the state.
I, I would.
Over the river.
I moved into Graylock Works.
Yeah.
I'm in, I'm in there. And then go over the bridge that old, it looks like a gas station.
Yep.
I'm in there. That's my place. I mean, I rent from there.
Yeah.
But, so I've got.
Handy, handy.
I got two warehouses that, you know, I would, we have warehouse space here, but.
North Adams and, you know.
Yeah, I think the bigger deal is, that's why we're kind of looking at this stuff is just, that's what we need. We need, we need Pownell to grow a little bit. And that growth is going to come with the businesses. We had to have something come back. I mean, what that general will be, I don't know, but it's, it's got to be something to come back here so we can start functioning here in town.
Do we have a coffee shop or something on Main Street still?
Well, he's working out. They're working out up in the Pownell Center. The house, my pet at Main.
Cafe.
Yes.
On the corner of Pettit Lane, there's a blue, kind of a bluish house there. They were trying to make a coffee shop out of that. They went at it for a couple of years.
But that's a problem, it's like, we're also used to going somewhere else.
Right. That's, that's what.
Same at the pizza place.
Yeah.
You know?
We had a restaurant, Edgar House used to be a good restaurant here and stuff. I mean, we had stores everywhere, gas station right there.
Well, it's sometimes nice to, to really cluster developments together because then people are like, oh, well, this is a place that's worth going to and staying to.
Right.
You know, and.
I think if more people were working in Pownell.
Oh, everybody had three jobs.
There would be money being spent in Pownell.
Like you said, it was 175 or something. That's, that's not really a lot.
No, no.
That's, that's nothing. That's a drop.
We, school teacher worked at the track and, you know, it's just everybody had a second job. And the kids, you know what, there was money, girls babysitting because it was night racing.
Oh, yeah.
So they were, you know, the races were over at 11 o'clock, so they were, you know, but the girls all had jingle. They all had money.
I think looking, if you guys are looking for stuff like that, I mean, that's, I think, going to be our bigger thing. Housing's going to come, you know, people building and buying out land to do that, but.
It's starting to come now.
I think the business is what really, the commercial land and stuff, I think, is what Pownell really has to look at.
That's what I see among the post office.
One of the first things you hear from somebody who moves, moves to Pownell is sigh, there's nothing to do.
That's the first thing you hear.
Nothing to do. You can go to Williamstown, you can go to Waukegan, you can go to Bennington, you can go to Saratoga, you can go to Montreal, you can go to Mass Moker. Where do you want to go?
Obviously, they're not prepared.
Than three hours.
Smaller.
Right, yeah, they're not. Well, a buddy of mine comes in, he lives over in New Hampshire and when he comes to visit and stuff, that's for, he goes, okay, where could we go? What could we do? I'm like, well, we could go to Bangton or we could go to Williamstown or we could go to Albany or something. My dad goes, from his house, he watched everything.
Yeah.
You know, but he's in a bigger, a bigger, bigger area.
Going to Keene. I mean, that's, I'm going over there because I have a doctor, but you can walk all over and.
If you want to buy big ticket items, go to Keene.
Yeah.
No tax.
Yeah. I mean, but you can, you can go coffee shops and restaurants and everything, just walk.
Manchester, hey, you know, it's, but we don't have a Mac molding. I mean, Mac molding's draws a lot up there. There's a lot going on in Upstate New York with computers. I got my grandchildren over there. That's boom, 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 boom. So anyway, that's.
How hard is it to get to the Pownell Racetrack from here, say?
For the racetrack?
The problem with the racetrack is very limited access. You cross the railroad there. There's only one at-grade crossing and they, the railroad doesn't really want to give anyone access to.
The railroad closed it because they don't pay.
And it got on a regular basis.
And there, there was no problem with Boston Main Railroad tracks as long as they paid for it. When they stopped paying for it, uh-uh. The big secret here too is another one is the Hoosier Tunnel. Hoosier Tunnel is in North Adams area. It takes four hours off the driving trains down around New York and that way through here, four hours to Boston, less time through the Hoosier Tunnel. That's going to be a nice area there. Someday they're making a little train museum there and whatever. But the Hoosier Tunnel's worth a lot of money. They just chopped it out so the double deckers can go through the Hoosier Tunnel.
Really?
Yeah. So there's a very, very, the railroad's been sold three times now. Pan Am sold it to the. Anyway, there's a lot of things around here that are, they're growing. The clock, I mean, the clock is, you know, what they are. And there's Mass Mokers, growing and growing. We've got a Stewart's here. You know why we got it here? Because it was made in what happens. Stewart's wanted to go over where Stop &amp; Shop is, right? So Man Barrett, he says, I can't stop you, but I'll hold you up a couple of years. He said, I want something better. So he got Stop &amp; Shop. Stewart's got a, here.
Got a pair.
And closest, like the hospital, the closest to the Mass line, the better.
Yeah.
And that's the secret.
Yeah.
You got the post office, you got the Mass line, and I don't think anybody in business, at least down here, has heard. I mean, it's a good business down. Because of the traffic that's going through it and what's going on, it's pretty active. From the post office back is, and we used to have a nice motel. Yeah, that's another issue that's going too. They're being told to leave out of there by April.
Yes.
At which. They want to turn over the people.
The homeless.
Oh, that, I understand. Yeah.
They're going to go back to being a host.
The Ladbrokes. Okay, the Ladbrokes people used to deal with a college and they got all the female sports teams that came to play at Williams.
Yeah.
Because it was nice up there, there was no party distraction.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they, they let, but we've had a lot, a lot of good people here in town. And we're getting that.
Is there anything else anybody's got in their, in their minds right now that these guys could, are missing or anything? You definitely want us to veto off this list?
No, no, wide open. It's Pownell's, Pownell's for business.
I think we need to.
But I think you need to talk to the septic lady.
It's very important.
Just a developer that wants to come in and.
That's what we need.
Prop a bunch of businesses and.
We had developers. We had Joe Rhodes. We do, how many develops we had? How many carpenters, guys build houses, Northwest Field, over there, they built that. They, oh God, guys have built my house. There's, there's, what do you got, amazing, two or three right now. But there was land for sale. There was, you know, it was, well, the racetrack was there, that's why, you know? Not for that, I guess.
So industrial site probably is my next topic, right?
Yep, that is.
Be exhausted, make, be exhausted.
Yeah.
I think we got a sense of that one.
I think, I think the industrial is all in the same category as the rent or the. Industrial. I mean, industrial estate, it's going to be commercial, it's going to be whether you can.
We magically store a lot of stuff down there.
You don't have a ability to have a system, that's, that's going to be our bigger step.
So one of the.
You know, to have a bathroom and be able to do that stuff inside.
So one of the things that it sort of comes to mind is, you know, as we were thinking about that, particularly on that Pettit Drive and US 7, that area, it felt like, okay, there's some room here, you know, let, let the elbows out and then get, you know, there's elbow room for, for multiple developments in that area. Like there, there could be, as Scott had said, you know, combining or several of those contiguous sites, there's, there's a lot of, I think, you know, potential, a lot of ground to cover, a lot of things to think about. And so I think we'll probably be focusing there with some, both the commercial and industrial. But it seems as if, you know, when we go to, up to Dorset, East Dorset and Tennis Way, you know, it's like, wouldn't expect to see, oh, there's a silicon pad wrenching thing and there's climate controls and there's that making Starwind turbines. And the thought is that, you know, where there's room and access to, what's the difference between Dorset's access to Route 7 and Pownell's? And it's nothing. Like what's the advantage in market access? Probably better in Pownell. And so the thought is that maybe these are areas where we're sort of thinking about that kind of, rather than it being one, you know, big 500-person kind of factory, we're sort of probably thinking more along the lines of, well, it's a little early to just make these sorts of judgment calls, but thinking about where there may be the opportunity for those smaller footprints, but.
A cluster of smaller.
Cluster of medium size.
Yeah. You know, and I bet it also has Shields Drive, which is another similar sort of example of that type of industrial footprint. You know, and whether or not the, again, the sort of Heart Gravel Bank might be a place like that for that, or, or the area back, he said Pettit Drive, or, or if there was, again, some way to, you know, subdivide the racetrack at some point in that way, that's a whole other story. Like we said earlier, there's lots of, lots of hangups running the racetrack from being as viable as something else that has much more direct access to 7. But how much land is that racetrack?
140 acres, but.
140.
Yeah. But I, you know, I've talked to a lot of people that fish all around and that river is going to be a fishing river that's going to be on the map. They say they're like this, they're catching brown trout some mail like, you know.
I was thinking about that.
Well, we'd like people to look at it.
Well, actually, according to, you know, what we, what we were looking at, it seems like most of the development on that 140 acres, a lot of it, the riverside area would not really be eligible for, for development and partially, you know, some of that is environmental remediation issues, but also part of that is just sensitivity to the, to the water.
Yeah. But it's a summertime, it's summertime affair, the people that's trying to get in there want to put the campsites there, fishing, break it up. Or else you put solar panels in it all.
Is there access from the north? Was it Casella? Like, is there like a?
Yeah.
Is it a road that runs, it looks like it connects, but it's not?
I own, I own no property.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah. You go right into women.
Okay.
So you go down to Casella's and you turn left.
You like the railroad.
And you wander or text and you go into back the gate. So when the racetrack was running and we had, what we had, a lot of blues, a 30,000 people, they left the lane there. But the firemen threw their, you know, I only bought it for the fair, the town Pownell Fair.
That's, that is not a public, that's not a real road, that's.
It is, it is called, yeah, it is.
It's got some name.
It's a mailing address.
I just wrote Orjutroot Access.
Orjutroot.
It wasn't on there, yeah.
Well, a guy built the goddamn thing to, to, to bring hay into the racetrack without going on Route 7.
Yeah.
So John Tlecky bought this place, he bought it from somebody and he take it in there and delivers hay all day.
Do you utilize that, that path? There's a couple of 90-degree turns.
Yeah, so it's not really functioning.
No, 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 it's not.
Trucks unless.
No, no, it's not. No, no, it's not.
You know, unless Casella decides that that's not a.
Yeah, the river could touch.
Not the best place for them to continue to do that kind of business and it becomes a sort of integrated.
But Casella's only operating on eight acres, eight and a half acres.
Yeah.
And, and you know something, that, that in the flood plain, it'll never flood. I mean, after the river goes up that high, you know, it's, you know.
And they have, and they have a great crossing as well, but that's, that's a permanent.
Slide number twelve.
Yeah.
I forgot to ask for slides advancing, so. Convo and, but I, I did want to, I know we've, um, we've got, we've taken a lot of your time and you've given us a lot of stuff to, to work on as we're getting, we can pare this down based on your input and I think that we've got really good clarity from you all about where we need to focus our efforts for each of the four scenarios. And I just wanted to let you know, here's, as a reminder, here's the steps through midsummer that here through May, we'll be revising these criteria, thinking revisions. But it felt like if, if people felt comfortable with these criteria, they gave us a lot to work with, we could sort of let them stand. But the potential sites were sort of paring away based on what we heard today. We'll be developing descriptions, site descriptions, um, for the, for our, our shortlist. And we're going to begin to reach out to owners and discuss the project, their interests, their concerns, just so that it seems like, I think, as we laid out this application many moons ago, that, that it, that's the appropriate thing to do to sort of just say, we're just talking, just, just having conversations. Um, then one thing I, and then July eighteenth, I'll come back in a second. We were thinking of coming back here, uh, as we discussed in our last meeting, um, on July eighteenth, if that meeting is still, you know, on the calendar, so we could go for the, that shortlist of those five, so we have that, that twenty where we're like, okay, this, you all feel comfortable? This is a, um, we're, we're getting towards a sort of a feel for like, this is, um, the criteria is, is serving us well. And here's really where it makes sense if we have conversations with anyone who's interested in what's going on in town. We have here's where our priorities are, you can share this with the select board, get their input, et cetera. Knowing that we have until the end of October to, um, get the final deliverables, it felt like that July for those, the site descriptions and, you know, having that meeting with the planning commission was, um, a good place to be. I did want to ask if, um, and one of the things that came up in looking at a lot of, you know, you see a number of gravel pits, et cetera, come up in some of our site assessments. Would it make sense for us to, to be in touch with the road foreman to get a feel for just, you know, what's, what sort of knowledge he may have sort of, in store as well to sort of augment what we've heard here today? Or shall we just sort of continue to liaise with you guys?
He grew up here. He's a good guy to talk to.
It was a suggestion from one of our planners.
Those are very smart.
So we can reach out and, and the thought is that that might be one of those ways that's like, oh yeah, this, he can help us get on the site, take a peek at things and just sort of give us the backstory where we need it because it goes a lot farther than, than we can from, um, you know, the plan view of a map or a GIS database, so.
Just step back a little for, for a minute, the racetrack property.
Oh, yeah.
What was, what was the, did we have a final word on, uh, is that, is that considered for industrial?
Yes, it's on our list to consider for industrial. And, you know, I mean.
Access to rail.
Yeah.
Is a big one, I think.
It, it has ability there that very few sites in the state have.
Right.
So I thought probably Casella would use the river to ship plastic and big things. That would be, he's got a siding.
I was like, does they use it?
Well, they, it's, it's been, it's been, it's been changed many times. Pan Am, when Casella's, Casella's just getting their feet in the ground.
That's true.
Or, yeah, well, when it was, when it was Trevor Mann running it, it's a different story.
Absolutely.
The now, the now, when Casella has all their investments already set up in Rutland, uh, but that's where they run their recycling center and all of their, and all of their, you know, trains that run the, that run your beer bottles down to North Carolina. Run out of Rutland, yeah.
I think the railroad, the, the track property has plenty of room for a rail switch.
Oh, yeah.
Anything like that liquidly.
It's part of it, it really does.
Badly. So, yeah, I think it was, we'll, we'll make sure that that's a, that's a part of our.
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
All right.
No, we did, we did also, uh, just to mention, we did, we did, we did put the town garage, uh, in, in the, um, uh, on the list. We didn't, we didn't talk about that. It seems, and that's right across from the general store.
Yeah.
That we did talk about, uh, the former general store that you talked about. And, um, and to some degree, you felt that that's, you know, if there's going to be redevelopment there and if there's going to be any kind of commercial base in that area, that that seems like a prime site that the town might be able to, you know, we'll have some, some incentives there. But then I go in there, they need to be able to use the garage to a different location, um, if that's the case. But it seems like a, a lot that would make some sense potentially as well, so.
Have, I don't know if that's. Have other sites ever been discussed for the town garage? Is that something that's been?
Well, the town really loved it, okay? So they, we just took it over.
Eyes. From the old town.
Yeah, from the old town. They stole away hides in there and, uh, when the market went up, they mobilized them and put them in.
So it might have a, might have a environmental remediation.
Uh, no, I don't think so. They've done a lot to it, but no, we paid it in, we, I, I worked there for a while.
Did the town have a garage prior to that?
No.
Oh.
No, they got the little something over in, uh, over in the landfill.
Okay.
Do we have, um, the other thing, I was just wondering if, um, because, because we have, uh, a lot of our database and comes from, uh, you know, state, state level, uh, you know, uh, database. But, um, is there a, is there a, like a map of something of just like town owned properties that, because sometimes that's, that's worth a while to, to look at that.
Catch map?
I was just saying.
Yes, I just want to see sometimes it's other, other jurisdictions, it's like, oh, here's publicly owned land that just kind of is helpful right off the bat.
It's just nice to have a, a, a layer you can look at that and be like, oh, well, here's an actual, you know.
I got a map.
Yeah, something like that, just contact Hannah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great, thank you, Tara. So, I think, um, I enjoy taking people's time, but I, even I begin to feel guilty after a while. So you guys, we've been here for a little while and so I see.
I think it's a good, good introduction to it. I think you guys did a good job with it.
I think you got a good job with the town.
I'll be doing some driving around this weekend. Yeah, if you have any, it is, yeah, um. Cut it?
I guess we have the cars. We used to come here all the time.
Well, we'll reach out to, yeah, reach out for Hannah, uh, to everyone.
Oh, yeah.
What's his name? Oh, God. E C I C, uh.
Is it Peter Odianna?
Mike.
Mike, Mike.
I don't think he's here anymore. He's retired.
No, the one that's retired from there.
Yeah, he's retired.
Anyway, I, I thought he got the best feel for panel than anybody ever, the constraints that came to town. He got out and talked to people.
Yeah.
We're interested, if panel's going to be an interesting place to play.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for, uh, your, your presentation, it was pretty, pretty helpful.
Much out with the bad dogs. Oh, he's among them right now, anyway.